Today, the day after. And we'll get started with today's hearing. Congratulations to Sal and Steve. And I guess we can congratulate ourselves, huh? Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Baines, councilmember Brand, councilmember Brandau, councilmember Olivier, councilmember Cantaro, councilmember Soria, and council president Capriolo.
Here. Let's all stand and salute our flag, please.
Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. So today, we have one of my favorite departments, airports. So this stage is yours.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
The airport department starts on page B-13. Excuse me. Thank you. Their total budget is $33.2 million. Their total positions are 96.35 FTE or 103 total positions. This is more or less a status quo budget for next year. The major changes are the implementation of the ambassador program, and there are some increases to appropriations and maintenance to reflect actual costs, and some additional staffing to address operational needs. Primarily in the staffing element, they have proposed adding one management analyst for personnel and financial duties, one senior airports operations officer for staff oversight and to address FAA regulatory mandates, one senior admin clerk for contract compliance, four airport safety officers converting to temp staff, and the conversion of six permanent part-time radio dispatchers to full-time and adding one dispatcher. I will leave the rest of the presentation to the department director, and he's also here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Airport director, it is your time. Did you have anything to add on that presentation?
No. No, it's a pretty comprehensive and explanation. I appreciate that, and I'm here to answer questions.
Let me take it out to the public first. Anyone in the public who wish to come forward and discuss this item, now is your opportunity. Please do so. And you have two minutes, seeing none. Back to the dais. The screen is clear. Almost. Member Soria.
Thank you, council president. I do have a couple of questions. I think page... I think page B-14 says that there's an anticipated increase in landing fee rate and terminal rental rates. Can you just kind of explain this? Will this incre... Is this increase due to volume or other increased rates? Just kind of want to understand.
No. The... Tomorrow morning's council meeting, we have a workshop and a follow-on item for a master fee schedule adjustment to our landing fees and terminal rental rates, as well as a reduction of the international arrival fee. Regardless of the outcome of that item tomorrow, we're okay with this budget. So... But the numbers we have in our budget do reflect the fact that we are anticipating this additional revenue. We actually have a 10-year financial plan that we'll be sharing tomorrow morning to show how all this rolls into a kind of a big picture for the airports. But with or without that fee increase, we're still in the black with our budget.
And so with tomorrow's action, you're saying that that's not reflected on this current budget? Is that what you're saying? Tomorrow's potential action by the council?
No, it's not.
Okay. So will that change more in terms of...
Well, if tomorrow's action is approved, what that means is some approximately $180,000 of additional revenue to the department as we anticipate it based on ridership at the airport. And that comes into play with regard to a 10-year financial plan that we have in place in terms of, you know, seven, eight, nine, 10 years from now, should we have a need to issue a bond? We want to make sure we're investment-grade rating, those kinds of things. And we'll get into a lot of detail about this tomorrow morning. It's a program that we've already vetted through the airlines, and they're in support of. But regardless of what happens tomorrow, it will not impact our budget.
Great. Thank you. The other question that I had was on the $35,000 for implementation of an airports ambassador program. Will there be a dedicated staff member coordinating this program? Is this a new staff member? How is that going to work? And then maybe can you speak to what you envision with this service to the visitors, passengers, what they're going to receive from this program?
Yes. Actually, the ambassador program is already up and running. A few months ago, we instituted it, and we have an existing staff member that manages that program at airports. There's no new staff because of it. It's a contract we administer. And the ambassadors are focused on providing assistance to passengers in the baggage claim area during peak arrival times. And then more recently, we are deploying them in the main lobby during peak departure times. And we are actually working very closely with TSA to ensure that as people approach the checkpoint, they're prepared and ready to go. It helps facilitate the wait times in the checkpoint. So it's been well received already. We track. We track every time we make contact with a customer. We have a lost bag, or they just have a question because they can't find anybody. We're right there to help them out. And it's been very well received. And this... So the line item, the budget, reflects the fact we're continuing the program, obviously, through this next fiscal year.
And then just on that, I guess the same note in terms of having this type of program and just helping also kind of with, I think to some degree, the airport is connected to tourism and that type of economy that we have here. One of the things that I noticed, because I've been using the airport quite frequently lately, the airport really doesn't have... It doesn't reflect really the city of Fresno. I don't know how you guys do the ad advertisements. Because if we're trying to lure passengers that are coming through the airport, a lot of it is obviously the national parks, which is great. But I think I'd like to see... I don't know if that's something that the council needs to take action on. How are we promoting maybe with the local folks here, like in the tower district? The tower district should be featured somewhere in the airport, so people know and they visit that area. There's other great areas in the city of Fresno. So I'm just wondering how you guys go about in making those determinations. I'm assuming you guys sell, add space. But have we thought about how we utilize the airports to really promote our city so that people are spending dollars within city limits as well when they're visiting?
Yes. We have an advertising contract in place that allows us to do that. And we... A lot of our focus has been regionally based, like the parks and other areas. However, if you walk through the airport, you will see advertising... Oh, there's blanks. There's just nice pictures. In other words, they haven't sold spaces. We have in our contract the ability to change out those blanks to basically anything we want. In other words, if we can get a hold of some graphics and things and put in something related to the tower district, something related to what's happening downtown in the Fulton Mall and other areas of the community, we can absolutely do that. It's already in our contract to do that.
So do we work... I don't know. Is that something that we need to work with the city manager's office and the administration, the visitors bureau? Or what can we do, Bruce, maybe to help?
Well, let me work with Kevin. But I think... I didn't realize that we had the ability to have some blank spaces that could be used at no cost to the city. So if that is indeed the case, I can certainly sit down with the CBB and some of the other tourism affected...
I like to see... I think there's certain parts. There's like the underground gardens.
Yeah, yeah.
There's the tower district. There's River Park. There's Fig Garden.
The zoo. I mean, all kinds of things.
There's Clinton and Blackstone.
Yeah.
Well, let me sit down.
Come to Clinton and Blackstone.
We'll come up and we'll come up with some ways to get some graphics. But I agree, those places that are unique downtown, the towers, you pointed out. Not sure if I call River Park unique. It's like Fashion Fair, but nevertheless. But there are some places in the community, and I absolutely agree, the zoo.
The zoo.
Our parks, Wooler Park, Roading Park.
Fresno State as well. Fresno State's huge.
So let us look at that, and we'll come back with some areas that we want to focus on promoting the community. Because I absolutely agree. When you walk in, especially if you've never been here, you don't get a sense of place. And I've been in other airports, and they very much promote those areas that are of interest to those who may consider either relocating here, whether it's a business or residence. So I... We'll find it and work with something else.
I think it's a great opportunity. So I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with.
And we've done this before. And these are the blanks. These are the unsold... You know, as soon as they get sold, we take them out and put whatever they get selling. For example, Fresno State's a big... They do a lot of marketing, and they have stuff out at the airport. But, you know, for example, what we've done recently, not what we're talking about here, which we can do, but what we've done recently is, for example, with a food expo. We've had... There's been graphics made, and we've inserted them in and so forth. So events we've done, but nothing that says more permanent, that's up there all the time about who we are. And we can certainly do that.
Playland, Storyland, all those are great places.
Right. And that can be done. And we have a marketing person at the airport, and we can interface with whoever we need to interface, and we can get that done.
Perfect. Thank you. The other thing, just on that, I know last year, on kind of that similar note of putting more information about the city, I think Oliver had requested that the council was somehow as part of the advertise... As part of the... Because he felt it was only the mayor there. So I don't know if that was ever done. That was, I think, discussed last time or last year during the same... During the budget. So I'm not sure what that outcome was because I haven't seen anything different.
No. Because after discussions, the mayor is the mayor of Fresno, and she represents the entire community. So the decision was to leave the message with the mayor.
Was it the message that he talked about, or...?
Yes. He wanted the voice of... Like the mayor's voices right now. So she is the official, I guess...
Oh, I thought it was something different. I didn't think it was the voice.
Yeah, it was the message. We... She does very... She does very well at that as well.
Okay. I didn't realize it was the voice thing. I thought it was more kind of like what we have here, so people know who the elected officials are. That's what I thought that it was. But, okay. I guess... Okay.
And she did recently update the message, and it's a nice message. And sometimes it's a challenge, though, to squeeze it in with all the other TSA messaging and everything else we got going there. And then everything gets interrupted with the airline messaging. So at some point, it's a little overload. But right now, there's a good balance.
Okay. Just wanted to check on that because I thought I remembered something vaguely last year discussed. The last thing that I want to just briefly discuss, I appreciate the effort in terms of environmental stewardship. I'm excited to see that there's electric vehicle stations budgeted for. I think it provides about $208,000 for eight-level one-electric vehicle charging stations and six-level-two electric vehicle in the short-term parking. So I just wanted to kind of understand how it's going to happen. So will these stations provide free power? Or what options of payments if not?
Yeah. We... Two things. We currently have an employee parking lot project going on, which we anticipate will be finished either late August or sometime in September. That project is going to incorporate charging stations for employees. For this coming fiscal year budget, we've got money to actually put charging stations, both level-one and level-two, short-term and long-term, in the public parking lot, free of charge, so that we won't have to worry about how to, you know, charge... I mean, how to fee it out. And the project was designed to further expansion if we see that they're being used up and there's no more spaces available. And I think that's going to happen eventually. So we'll be able to easily expand that, both on the long and short-term areas.
Is there time limits in terms of charging? Like if people are parking in the long term, you know, for a few days, what's the time limit on those, on both the short and the long term?
There's no time limit. If you have an electric car, and you're going for a week-long vacation or a business trip, you're going to pull in, you want to plug in, you do it, and your car's going to sit there for a week, and you don't have to move it, obviously, or have somebody come and move it. Once you grab that spot, it's yours for the duration, just as if it was a normal, you know, short or long-term spot.
Is that typical?
It's very, very typical, yes.
Like airports? That people can park there for a week long?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, the charging station is designed, once the car's charged, it shuts down. It turns off. So it's not like going all the time.
Once the car is charged, it's no longer emitting any power?
It'll still be there, but, you know, the technology is such that it'll turn itself off once your car's charged. So when you return from your trip, whether it's a two-day or a five-day, you'll have a fully charged car. And but you'll be there the whole time. You'll be taking that spot up. And that's part of the equation with regard to how many should be put in and why we've built in easy expansion capability.
So what is short-term versus long-term? Is it days? Is it...
You mean the fee?
No. In terms of the time? What does it... What does short-term consist of? One day? Less than a day?
Short-term, well, it's usually just a few hours. People will come, you know, drop people off, be in the lobby for an hour or two. It's usually not that long. So there's a high turnover. And that's why we have the level-two chargers. So, I mean, if you're there and you want to plug in, great, do it. And if it's an hour, or even if it's 30 minutes, it'll help you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. And the funds that we're using, are we looking at any state funds that are out there? This is just all airports money?
This is airport revenue. There is a program through the airboard that we are talking to them about. And the program is designed to provide, you know, partial funding for the equipment. So we're talking to them about that. But whether we receive that funding or not, we're going to make this happen. We've budgeted the full amount of the project in our budget, not anticipating any funding from the airboard.
And since we're, I guess, talking about charging stations, Bruce, do we have any plans for other charging stations within the city? Or is it just in the airport for now?
I think it's right now, it's in the airport. We've talked to the air district, but it's partial funding. So we'd have to come up with the other funding to install it. Not anticipating, even if we did put them in, that we're going to be in a position to subsidize someone's vehicle because, in a lot of ways, that's exactly what we're doing by allowing them to charge for free.
We could consider taxing oxygen.
Would you support that? You'd support a tax?
[inaudible] So right now, the installation is rather... Our cost would be... I don't know if there'd be much of a return on investment. So unless the air district is going to be willing to fund 100% of the infrastructure, you know, most people with electric cars have already acquired the charging system when they bought the car at home. So to recharge a car here at City Hall, someone's going to have to cover that additional utility cost. And that's not something I think we're going to be willing to do.
Okay.
And the amount of money available, I think, through the airboard is pretty small. I mean, it's... I mean, I anticipate... I anticipate these 14 stations in the infrastructure to go in at a cost of approximately... I'm looking over here, $120,000 plus or minus. And the available funds, if you get them from the airboard, are only per unit of... How much?
Five.
$5,000 total?
Per unit.
Per unit, so...
I guess I just wonder how other cities do it because there are cities across the state. I know I just traveled to France, and the city also has them, not everywhere, but I think sporadically. So I guess it'd be interesting to see how other municipalities are doing it. I know some charge that it's not free. But I think it's a... I think it's great for the city to be thinking, you know, forward or progressively about the environment and how this can help as we encourage folks to, you know, either drive electric vehicles or some other vehicles that don't emit as much or add to the carbon footprint. That's just... That's my perspective.
And I will say this with regard to sustainability efforts. We can't afford to just go out and do standalone sustainability projects for the most part. But we incorporate it into bigger projects, and that really does help defer the cost. For example, our employee parking lot, which was a $2 million project, which is well under construction now, it wasn't a lot of money to throw extra conduit in the ground and then pay for these charging stations that are sitting above ground. So it's kind of piggybacking on a much bigger project that we already have funding for. And that's how we can make these things happen.
And so I guess going back, because I know Bruce just mentioned, well, these... You know, we don't want to foot the bill. Have the airports thought about the electric bill that will come from that and how that impact your budget? Is that something that you guys have considered?
It has been.
As you move forward?
We ran the numbers on that and the additional... What we anticipate to be the additional cost, I mean, the cost of providing the infrastructure and the billing and the charge... A reasonable charge that people would pay, the numbers didn't make any sense at all to try and charge for that fee. I mean, the additional cost, the rate of recovery was years and years and years. And I can't remember how many years it was. But it was... It made more sense just to do this as an amenity to the airport environment.
When do you guys expect to have them built out or installed?
Employee parking lot, I anticipate in September. That'll be up and running. For the public parking lot, I believe it's going to be about a 60-day construction period. We're ready to go to bid now. So I'm thinking late summer, early fall, we should have these things installed and available to the public.
Thank you. Those are all the questions.
The screen is clear. I have a Fiat electric car that my daughter drives. And so you're right. It comes with an electric charging kit, and we plug it in the garage and so forth. And I also noticed at the airport, is it that Best Western that just opened that we cut the ribbon not too long ago, just off of McKinley? They have a charging station there as well. And with my ongoing treatment at Fresno Community Hospital, they have electric charging places in their structure, their parking structure. So there's a lot of availability in our community that I found just in my experiences here and there. So I know it's there, and I think we're on a sustainability path with private industry as well as the city. So that's great. Great job. Great team. I always enjoy hearing all the great things about the airport. You and Fresno State are kind of my gems, and you guys do a great job. And I think it's a great representation when people come into our airport from international flights to local flights, across-the-country flights. I think we create a great impression of our community. And I know you're doing your ongoing every day trying to figure out better ways to service the community. And I really appreciate it. And on behalf of District Four, the city too, I think I can safely say we truly appreciate you and your team. And thanks. Keep up the good work. We really, really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the finance department.
The finance department starts on page B-47. It is a general fund department. Its total budget is $8.2 million and supports 60.75 FTE or 61 positions. This is primarily a status quo budget this year. They are adding an additional position, a system analyst, to be the primary resource. During the implementation of financial and human resource systems, it will coordinate and function as a liaison between ISD, personnel, and finance. They also would like to add one senior account clerk for payroll to assist the unit in payroll review and interfacing with the payroll system. There were also some comments made yesterday concerning central printing. And I'd like the controller to come up, if you would, to address this issue.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Jane. Good morning, council. Mike Lima, Controller, Finance Director, City of Fresno. Included in the budget is a proposal to issue an RFP for the... In order so that a private vendor can provide printing services for the city. The... If council approves this as part of the budget, we would come back later in the year with an RFP, with a national contract with an outside vendor to provide these services. So council will have a second chance to vote on this a little later in the year. Our plan is to come back to council sometime in October with this. We plan... The plan is to issue the RFP in July, get proposals through August, make an evaluation, come back to council in late September, early October, with implementation happening around November 1st. So there is money in the budget right now to fund the current central printing operation So there is money in the budget right now to fund the current central printing operation through November 1st. So why did we make this recommendation? Well, as we were building the budget, it became apparent that we needed to add a supervisor position in that unit. Right now, the unit has only two people in it. It's a central printing, a print offset, a central printing offset person, and then also a admin clerk, who also does a lot of the mailing and sorting of mail. So we needed a supervisor. Right now, the purchasing manager is functioning as supervisor over that unit. Having a supervisor, one supervisor over two rather dysfunctional, or not dysfunctional, two rather disparate units can be very difficult, as we found during the recession. So the best thing to do is to be able to have individual supervisors over each unit. But then we started looking at the workload, and the workload frankly doesn't justify a third person. To give you an idea, in FY13, central printing processed 1,037 jobs. In FY14, that dropped to 898. In FY15, that dropped to 856. So in the space of two years, the workload has dropped 17.5% in that unit. So we just can't have a supervisor just sitting there, watching two people, and not actually participating, and then we don't have the work. So why isn't, so what happened to the work? Where's it all gone? Well frankly, technology has overtaken that unit. We have, right, as was mentioned yesterday, the issue came up about the central printing contract, and about the print, the actual printers themselves, and that contract being moved from central printing to ISD. Printers are no, or copiers are no longer copiers, they are printers, they are scanners, they do a lot of other functions. So, all that work that used to be done in a central printing area is now being farmed out across the organization. We're all doing a piece of that. Best example of that is the fact that we have the CAFR, the Budget Book. We don't print as many copies of those as we had in the past. They're now on PDF files that you could pull up on your tablet, or on your computer, and look at them that way. Another good example, outside of this organization, years ago, when I went to Fresno State, they used to make you buy a course catalog, it was a thick old book about this, that was your bible for the term that you were there. They don't print that anymore. It's now all online. They simply get rid of it. And to be perfectly candid, I can see a day in the not-too-distant future, when the Budget Book and the CAFR will be strictly online. We won't have printed copies anymore. That kind of reduction in workload of using more and more technology is filtering through the entire organization. That's why we're losing the jobs, the work that's actually running through the central printing unit. In addition to that, we are, so what we're left with is kind of highly specialized, big banners, that kind of work that is right now being done there. And sometimes, we don't have the equipment to do that. So we are currently farming out, I would say, call it a material amount of work. In FY15, we farmed out about $80,000 worth of work to outside vendors, which was about 11.5% of the budget. In FY16, through the end of May, we've outsourced almost $120,000 of work, which is about 18.2% of our budget in that unit. I want to emphasize a couple points. This proposal has absolutely nothing to do with the quality of work being produced by the employees in that unit. It also has nothing to do with the dedication that they display on a daily basis. And there is no question that we need central printing services, in one way, shape, or form. This is an issue that, much like we had with the discussion with Uber and with other technologies, technology is catching up to the core function. So the policy decision really becomes, do we, given all the other priorities we have, is it a priority of the city to have a dedicated in-house central printing shop, knowing that the workload is decreasing, and that we need to make further investment into it? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Is that the end of the presentation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. We'll take this out to the public. Anyone in the public wish to discuss this item, please come forward. Give us your name, your address, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, Dee Barnes, Fresno City Employees Association President, 1330 L Street. There have been a lot of changes with technology, I acknowledge that. There's been a lot of changes with staffing levels in the city. However, if you look on page B48, in one paragraph, they're saying, "The graphic reproduction unit provides a wide range of support services, including copying, printing, graphic design, as well as mail and messenger service." Now, of course, the city did already outsource our mail service, where it goes from City Hall to the Police Department, to airports. So I don't know if anybody's asking how much that is costing, but that's a factor. I'm a little disappointed that, because this has been attempted before, where they wanted to privatize or outsource this department. And they at least came up with some facts and figures, dollar amounts, and did a managed competition, where you actually see what the services are costing the city. I'm not even sure how they would even do this, for some of this, because basically, we all know, even though it's available online, it's my understanding that our print shop is still doing hard copies, I think 14 or 16 copies of the council agenda, every single week, and they're staying late to do it usually, along with the city clerk's office. Every other week, they're doing the planning commission, they're doing those documents. So why aren't we at least looking at managed competition? Let's get the best bang for our dollars. You cannot just say, well, we're going to save this much money, because how much is it going to cost the management analyst, or the staff assistant, or the city attorney to make their own copies? Because that stuff is still going to be done. Business cards, I work at the Police Department. Has anyone asked what we currently, what our print shop charges for business cards, and what that's going to cost? And what's it going to cost on the rush jobs? Because right now, we have the authority to allocate that staff, and have them do something that needs to be done right now. It's also my understanding that they have the confidentiality to copy stuff from the city attorney's office. You're not going to send that out to Kinko's. So I think that Council really needs to look at this, and needs to really think about this. And I don't want to say anything about the employees, or the staff, or the managers, but they're, one of the issues down there has been a lack of knowledge of the manager to know exactly what is being done, and how it's being done. So I would really appreciate Council taking the time to talk to some of the employees, and actually ask for those figures, and think about what it's going to cost for the various departments to either do all their own jobs, or to outsource. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the community wish to come forward? Now is your opportunity. Seeing none, back to the dais. That means, Member Quintero, future supervisor is up.
Michael, good morning. Dee brought up a question that I had regarding the reports that are confidential. Who's going to take care of those?
Well, I think at this point, it would probably be each department who would be handling that function. We just recently entered into a new contract with Ray Morgan, to put new copiers in most departments throughout the city. Those can provide quite a high level of service, and we think that each department would be able to handle internal confidential documents within that department.
But would that mean then, that each department would have to hire one person to do that?
We don't think so. We don't think so. We think this, frankly, we think that a lot of them are doing it right now, because as I mentioned, the workload has dropped in central printing, so we think that that's actually going on right now. But, no, we think that that will be assumed within the department's existing resources.
City Attorney, would you have somebody to fill that position when you need to do confidential paperwork to Council?
Well, we do a lot of our own copying and printing for large items. We would have to have some kind of an agreement with whoever the outside agency would be, to ensure that things were kept confidential, separate from a normal contract.
I don't know that that would be that cost-effective then.
I don't know, we haven't analyzed it.
Yeah. And the, you mentioned about, if you stay with the status quo, you know, you have two people there now, you'd have to hire a manager?
Yes, we believe that.
Why don't you make one of the two people a manager?
Well, we could. We could convert that position, but again, we don't have the workload for more than two. So we could convert one of those positions to a supervisor, but there's no guarantee that one of those individuals that's there would get that supervisor position. And in any case, they're still supervising only one person. Typically, the city likes to have folks supervising more than just one person.
Yeah, but the numbers don't, I mean, one supervisor for two people, instead of having just one supervisor of the two people, you know?
Well, no, it would be, if I understand you correctly, you'd convert one of those positions. You've got two there right now. One of them would be a supervisor, and then you'd have one person reporting to that individual. So you'd still have two people. But I know typically, the city likes to have more than a one-to-one relationship with supervisors to staff. So I don't, I mean, we can examine it, we can look at it further, but I don't know that we would.
Would it be manageable if you had only one person in that department, and then when, you know, when you have an extra workload, you know, it peaks up, that you could hire somebody to come in and work at that position, and then leave when that workload is done?
You're talking a temp employee, obviously, and that would be coming in, and yes, that's possible. Again, we start running into the 2,080-hour limit that we have. We start running into other issues that are on the personnel side, that where temps don't have that kind of, don't have as much flexibility as you might imagine. And that still doesn't address the workload issue. As I mentioned, the workload continues to decrease in that unit, so.
Didn't we used to have temps in code enforcement?
I don't know for certain. I'm not sure about that.
You haven't been here as long as I have.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, well, those are pretty much the concerns, you know? The one is the confidentiality, and then, you know, hiring one person to oversee two, and instead of, you know? I just don't know that it's going to be that cost-effective, and then you say, like, the city attorney mentioned, he'd have to come into some agreements with whatever company you contract with for the confidentiality, and it just seems like a lot of work.
Well, you know, other agencies do this. Fresno Unified has a contract with Rico Corporation, they handle all their in-house printing. Other cities have done it, I know Roseville, for instance, has done this. So it isn't, the issues you're bringing up are not insurmountable, other places have dealt with them. But yeah, we would need to explore it a little further, and hash those kind of issues out.
I think the point is, is that until we issue the RFP and get proposals back, we know what it costs us to do it in-house. So once we get the RFP back, then we'll have a better idea, or be able to do a comparison as to whether or not it is or isn't cost, there's a cost benefit of doing this. And until then, and then ultimately, at the end of the day, as Mike pointed out, if it's the Council's discretion or choice at that time, not to award the contract, you don't award the contract. But we'll certainly take your input as far as the confidential, confidentiality of some of the documents. But I have to agree with Mr. Lima. A lot of us are now doing things that, back in the day, we had assistants do for us. I know, we do a lot of our own documents, typing our own documents, typing our own reports, printing, sending PDFs, scanning them as PDFs, and so, this, the budget presentation is a good example. If you recall, we used to have department heads coming in and presenting PowerPoints and everything else, and there were copies of PowerPoints. And now, and I can see, I see it up at the dais a lot of times, council members are working either from an iPad, or a WorkPad, or a computer, they're not necessarily looking at the agenda, the hard copy agenda, so it's just, technology has evolved, things have changed. And so, the RFP will help us figure out some of those things, and whether or not, at the end of the day, it is cost-effective, and we'll make that presentation to Council once that that's completed.
You know, and then, the other thing I'm looking at, it, to me, it's a, it's a big change, you know? If we do that, and, you know, the reality is, you've got a new administration coming in January, and maybe let them decide how they wanted to set it up for the next four years. I mean, that's something else to look at as well, you know, to consider, so. Okay, thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is Member Soria.
Thank you. I also have some of the same concerns that were raised by Councilmember Quintero regarding, you know, some confidential documents, but also just turnaround. I know, and maybe if I can ask our county, our city clerk, some questions regarding kind of our agendas. I like to, and I think most of us, receive our agendas on paper, and I know that we have a timeframe to turn in stuff, so that these agendas can be out by a certain timeframe. I don't know if we outsource that, we'll have that same ability. So maybe if you can speak to that, Yvonne, because I know that you guys work a lot with the central printing.
Yeah, we do work a lot with central printing, not only for our agendas, but also for our Employee of the Quarter and Service Awards. And we get great service in-house, and one time, we did have to outsource it, because the staff wasn't there, and it was horrible. Lots of mistakes that had to go back and be fixed, and just a long time to get our product as an end result. But as far as the agendas, usually, we want to get them to print around at least noon on Fridays. That hardly happens. It's happened sometime, and it's great when it does, but usually, we're waiting around, and also, central print is waiting for us. And it takes some time, a lot after 5:00, everybody's gone, but if they come back on the weekend, they can pick up their agenda, so sometimes, some of them hang around. I've seen Gregory there at night all the time, went on Friday, so those are the kinds of things that we experienced, and I'm not sure, if we don't keep up with our deadlines, how it's going to impact Council with their agendas, and I know they like to read them over the weekend.
So that, for me, is a concern. I don't know if you guys surveyed, I think the Council, we are big beneficiaries of these services. I know my staff personally has great relationship with folks in the print shop, and they, we've had no problems, at least in my time that I've been here. The only problems that actually arise was when we outsourced, and that was horrible for us. We didn't get turnaround of our MyBusiness cards, it took forever, mistakes, and I'm not comfortable outsourcing if, I haven't, at least in the time that I've been here. I think the product has been to my satisfaction, to my staff's satisfaction, we're hearing it from the clerk's office. I don't know if we really have, you know, looked deeper into really looking at outsourcing, outsourcing it. Can we just, why do we need a supervisor? Can't we just have a manager? Why are you talking about needing a supervisor if it's just two people? Can it be, just be a manager and be somehow restructured? So can you speak to that?
Well, I mean, you can call it whatever you want. At the end of the day, someone's got to be able to tell this person, the staff that's there, I want you to do this assignment, I want you to do that assignment today. You need someone to do that. Right now, we've got the purchasing manager filling that role on a part-time basis. That's not effective management for that unit. We need to have someone down there on a more permanent basis.
So is it the management of the current person, or is it?
No, no.
The structure of how it is?
It's the structure of how it is, I would say. No, it's not a reflection on the purchasing managers.
So have we attempted to look at putting it somewhere else, and having, you know?
Within the city?
Yeah.
We have had some discussion about putting it in other, in another department, perhaps. It is, it doesn't fit very well with the mission of some of these other departments, but we can continue to examine that, and maybe that's an item that we bring back to Council as part of the RFP.
What about ISD? They do all the technology stuff, so why?
They could, but that's not.
Why wouldn't it be appropriate there?
Because that's not exactly print jobs. That, I mean, they use that equipment, but that's not, they're not set up, they're set up to deliver IT services, they're not set up to deliver print services. That's a separate beast in it of itself. And if I could respond to your.
Well, you guys have it under Finance right now, right?
Yeah, I know.
And so, how does that fit? So it doesn't, you know?
It doesn't, really.
So.
Yeah. I mean, central printing was previously in the Department of Administrative Services, as was Finance, and when Department of Administrative Services was broken up, central printing ended up with purchasing as part of the new General Services Department. And then, once General Services was broken up, it, they moved purchasing to Finance, because that has a very strong tie, but central printing came along with it at that point. So that's how it ended up in Finance.
Okay.
But if I could address your point, because you mentioned about quality, about outsourcing, I would remind you that to keep in mind that those were, more than likely, were jobs that were called out on kind of an emergency basis, or called out because there wasn't staff available, there was, in other words, it was kind of a rush situation, and the quality suffered. We're going to go through an RFP, we're going to spell out, we expect this level of service, we expect these timeframes, this is what we're doing, so.
So you're going to put in the RFP that when documents are not given by the administration within the noon deadline, which, as you hear from our clerk, happens very, you know, in terms of even the PowerPoints or whatever that is included in the Budget Book, is not given at noon, so are you going to include that in the RFP, that if documents come by 5:00, still have to be printed, so that we can have it on time? I'm concerned that I'm not going to get my stuff, that I need to do my homework, to be able to come prepared for the next council meeting. So that's where I'm concerned, because we're hearing that those deadlines are not met.
We are going to work and put down those timeframes of the key items.
So may I, may I make this suggestion? We'll look at this, because it sounds like there is at least a couple of you who prefer to still read this in a paper form, rather than reading it online, which is available at noon. So let me work with the department, but one suggestion would be, is that since most of the work seems to be being generated, or most of the concern is being generated from the clerk's office, that one option is that we assign, or we reassign, somebody within the print shop to work under the supervision or management of the clerk, because that really seems to be the primary concern. And then that way, Yvonne would have the ability to supervise that staff, and make sure that work is being produced, in order to at least meet the Council's expectations.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next up is Member Brand.
Hi, Mike.
Good morning.
This goes back, you know, a long time since I've been here. Are you making a specific recommendation yourself, or are you just leaving it open?
No, the recommendation is that we proceed with an RFP, and that we adopt a budget that contains five, four months of funding for the central printing unit. That's the recommendation, that is in the mayor's budget.
If we went back, say, seven, eight years ago, how many, was there more people there at that point in time?
Absolutely, yeah. We had, I was thinking about that this morning, actually. I can recall at least six that were in there, in that shop, before the recession, and then we have cut it back down to, right now, it's at 2:00.
Yeah, that's my recollection. As I first started, there were more people there.
Yes. Well, we actually had facilities, we not only had the print shop down in City Hall, we had another print shop out at the Municipal Service Center, and that was staffed, and we don't have that facility at Municipal Service Center. Everything is being done out of here at the present time.
Right, and the technology really has changed just in the last five, six years.
Absolutely.
Dramatically. If we elected to go with an outsourcing, would the two people that are there now have other jobs within the city, in different departments?
At this time, we are examining all the potentials for having them move to other departments, as the city manager mentioned, perhaps moving at least one of them to the clerk's office. We haven't identified those spaces yet, but we're continuing to look at those at this time.
And you mentioned that we need an investment, a future capital investment. How much are we talking about in terms of the hardware, software?
So right now, we have about $97,000 worth of equipment in that, in our central printing shop downstairs. There's about $26,000 that we need to invest in the next year or two, if we were to go ahead and do that. So not a huge capital outlay, most of it is relatively new equipment, but we would, we do have about a $26,000 investment we would need to make, probably within the next year or two.
Okay. And I know, even on software, when you have proprietary software, if you don't continually upgrade it, you know, they quit backing the warranty, and you're almost compelled to keep on investing.
Yes.
So if do the RFP, the RFP. So if do the RFP, the RFP is simply going to compare the cost of outsourcing, right?
Yes.
The decision is not going to be made. It's simply to explore the option, correct?
Yes, right.
Okay. I'm okay with that, just to explore it. And in the event that it seemed more cost-effective to go that way, I'd like to see us make a concerted effort to make sure the two employees now can find, you know, comparable positions within the city. If they've been there a long time, seem like they've done a good job, then we could, you know, we're not like we were back in 2009. We should be able, within 3,000 people, city manager, find two positions we can integrate so nobody gets laid off on the deal. So, but I'm okay with, you know, at least exploring the option. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Brandal.
Thank you, Council President, and congratulations.
What was that?
And congratulations on your victory last night.
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, that's it. That's it. This microphone won't take much more.
The same to you, my friend.
Start breaking up the minute I mention your name. I'm going to ask a question of Dee first.
Sure.
Mike, if you don't mind. Hi, Dee. I was gonna
Hello.
I was going to ask the same exact question that that Lee just asked a minute ago of Mike. But I, so, so I've already heard what Mike's had to say on this, but I wanted to ask you about it. Do you have concern about the employees? Do you, do we feel like the employees would still stay employed by the city, right?
I'm not sure on that. I know one has some very specific skills and I don't know if there's anything comparable in the city to that. And Councilmember Brand, when he said, you know, he wants to look at the RFP, my request is, are we going to actually get some documentation on what it does cost us to provide that same service? I know that's one of the things that I've talked to Public Utilities Director Skweda on is that, you know, we should at least have the opportunity, the employees, to do a managed competition, to show, you know, how they're doing the job, what they're doing. It has been really hard. They have lost some staff. And yes, there have been some issues down there. But it's almost like it's been set up for failure. When they say that the workload has cut back, I question that because I think a lot of times it's, the stuff could and should be done by central printing and it's not.
Outsource.
And my question is, why is it not? Why is it being done by other departments? Why is it being sent out? And, and like I say, I think that council also needs to talk to the other departments and see what kind of things they are having printed and what kind of things that are being done. It's a lot more expensive to just run copies on the copy machine than have the production-level equipment down there do it. I see things done over at the police department that it's like, why are you running 5,000 copies of something on a regular copy machine? Because we are paying for that. There is a cost to that. And like I say, depending on the department and how big the office is, if you have a management analyst or a supervisor or a manager doing that work, what is the true cost? What is the true cost of having that dispersed through the city? What are we currently paying for those things because of the staffing levels, because things have been cut so much? And I think a lot of times there are decisions made in the city that are penny wise and pound foolish. And I think we really need to look at that and and talk to the different areas. And like I said, just on business cards, what is the true cost of business cards? Because I know you get a pretty good deal through central printing. And as far as managers and supervisors, there are a lot of employees that work. They do not need direct supervision. We have a lot of areas like that, a lot of employees that are able to be autonomous. And having a supervisor or a manager on the second floor when they're located on the first floor or vice versa, you know, that can work. Obviously, you don't have a manager or supervisor out in a car following around our parking controllers or a lot of our other employees, especially blue collar workers. You don't have someone following them around all the time. So that's another issue that there needs to be some real questions asked on some of those.
All right. Thanks, Dee. Mike. I think I would, you know, I read the, the email sent to council offices. I don't know if it was, it was probably sent to the administration from John. And I don't know how to pronounce John's last name. Is it DeLuca or is it DeLucia?
DeLucia.
DeLucia. And he wasn't able to be here today. You know, I'd like, maybe we could hear from John before we do adopt the final budget. I mean, it's worth hearing his opinion. The, his email is actually very good. Illustrates a couple of concerns that he has. When it comes to the two employees that are, it sounded to me like there's just, they need to divide the labor and somebody needs to decide who does what job. Is that, is it that easy?
On a day-to-day basis, yes. That's
And can, can we not just make a choose between those two employees and put one of them in charge of that decision?
I, it's possible that could happen. That being said, there's no guarantee that either one of them would get that managerial position, which would mean one of them would be out the door. It would be an open competition, just like all our other personnel recruitments are here at the city.
You could, you might not even need to make it, like you said, though, it's just a matter of definitions. But you might not need to make it a full management position or supervisor position, but create, you know, create a level in there based on something. But I'm going to be supportive of the RFP for sure because I think at this point, it's probably the wise thing to do. But I would add that I think that Dee's concerns, we need to know what, what we could provide those services for. So to be fair, we need to know that information. When we see all of the private contractors come in with their numbers, we need to know what our numbers are, business cards and everything else. The one thing that I, that I do have concern about, naturally, normally I would be very supportive of that whole process. But when I see the thing about last-minute jobs coming in on Friday afternoons, that worries me about, about the private sector being able to deliver that consistently. It's our fault that we don't turn the stuff over to them in time and especially on a Friday afternoon. Now, myself personally, to give a little background, I don't, I don't need the printed agenda on Friday afternoon. I can read that myself over the weekend online. So, so that's, that's where I'm at on the agenda. However, I know my staff, and I've checked with a couple of the other staffs back there, they're very, they're very the central printing does a good job for the city of Fresno. So whenever we have something that comes up last minute, whatever it is, they can get on it. I do appreciate that. I'm not saying, but for sure the private sector could do that. When you get to real time constraints on Fridays, it could be, it could be a problem. So anyway, I'm going to be supporting of the RFP for sure. I think that's the right thing to do. We do that all the time in the city. And then we find, we discover a lot of stuff through that process, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Soria.
I have a couple more just questions. So one, I'd like to also just know, when we did this last fall, outsource the services, maybe the summary of charges that we were, that we incurred? Because I know that we didn't have access to the central printing. So can you give us that information?
You mean how much money we've spent or?
Yeah.
We've spent $120,000 through the end of May this year.
Through the end of May, just on the
Just on, on outside printing services. Last year it was eighty, about 80,000. I have the actual
But this was during the time where we couldn't access it at all?
Some of that was during that time, yeah.
Okay. Okay, perfect. And then what I'd like to do, I'd like to see if, because at least what the numbers show here to me, that there's funding through November. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see, I'll make a motion to, to make sure that we budget enough money for the fiscal year and look at, as Bruce mentioned, moving it to our city, exploring that option. It doesn't preclude them from doing the RFP. You guys can do your RFP and come back. But I think that I would like to see enough money budgeted so that we're not scrambling to figure out if we don't have, if we don't have the money to sustain the central print shop for the entire year. So I'd make that motion to make sure that we do that and that there's a shift. I'd like to see how maybe things would change if they come in under the purview of our clerk, who utilizes them very frequently. And like I said, their work has been to my satisfaction. I know my staff works very close with him on a, on a regular basis, so.
Yvonne, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Like Member Brandal.
Thank you, Council President. I just mentioned John, and John, you just walked in. If I could have you come up for a quick minute. And I don't, did you hear my comments, John? Were you in the room in time?
On and off.
I, I mentioned your email that you sent to council. Did you hear that part?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys taking time every day.
Okay. So I thought the email was really valid. What, what other, what comments would you like to add?
Well, my concern is, you know, we're a silent partner for every division in the city. As you mentioned, it's ridiculous to have MA twos and other people running the copiers. We're kind of that person for every division. I would say our number one customer or client is planning development. We do so much work for those guys in and out. It's all short deadlines, legal notices, mailings. We do a plethora of services for the city. A lot of that stuff goes undocumented too, since we're general fund. You know, we don't make paper trails, so it's kind of hard to book every request. But, you know, I get constant requests every day. You know, today I started a day with three fires to put out. I'm busy from eight to five. I'm putting in like 12 hours in an eight-hour shift down there. There is no decrease in volume. In fact, as the city and tax revenues are getting better, we're just getting bigger and bigger projects. We've always had the struggle where we haven't been able to keep all the print jobs in-house. That's fine. We're pretty busy as it is. As we said, staffing is really our biggest issue. I've had some sick time last year. It caused some, some major hiccups. Excuse me, I'm a little anxious right now. And same with my coworker. Staffing is our only issue. As far as direction, we're on autopilot down there. Mr. Water here is our supervisor, but he has very little input in our day-to-day activities. My biggest challenge over the past two years was my, my coworker. And she has a slight disability which prohibits her from doing her full shift. I've been complaining about that forever. But, you know, I think last Friday, we started a temporary part-timer who's actually qualified to do the work for the first time in a year. Till then, all we had were like part-time, light-duty fax people, which we had to retrain every two to three weeks. It's impossible to do anything when you're short-staffed and then you got to train a new guy every three weeks. But as far as our volume, it's, it hasn't decreased. It's only increases. We, we do a full range of services from design to print to copies to digital imaging to wide format. For a while there, we were the only division in the city with a wide-format plotter. And we were running all this stuff for public works. Without us there, I mean, all that goes outsourced. And you guys lose all control. You guys are going to lose your current service levels. I mean, right now, any of you guys call, you can get whatever you want within an hour or two. That's not going to happen.
I know. I'll just add again that my, my, my council district has really happy, been happy with your work.
Yeah, well, there's no, I'll go toe-to-toe as far as price, quality and service with any vendor out there. All our materials are done at cost, at paper cost, and we buy it the same cost vendors do out there, except they have to factor in labor. They have a bunch of different overheads. We don't. We own all our equipment. The only equipment we don't own is our production copiers, and those are on a cost-per-copy basis. So if they're sitting there idle, we don't pay for them. As far as our click charges, we're right in line with everyone outside the city. In fact, we're below because like I said, we don't have that labor cost on top of it that they have to factor in. I'll, I welcome a managed competition. We've, we've done this three times in the past. We've came out ahead every time. And last, the most recent experience was with the mail, where we unloaded all our mail services to the county.
So, so John, if you were going to describe the difficulties, so there's obviously been some difficulties. And if I'm hearing you correctly, most of them have come because either one or both of you have been, had either a health problem or something come up, and then that, and then that creates a problem for the print shop for that timeframe?
It's a two-person staff. I had some health issues. I'm past that now. You know, it's kind of hard on me because when I call in sick, they send out an email saying the print shop's closed for the day. It's a lot of pressure to live with, you know? It's, it's a lot of stress. I don't have a reliable coworker, you know? I should have someone there to, to pick up the slack when I'm not there, but I don't. It's, as Dee mentioned, you know, we're kind of set up for failure. That's pretty much the road we took this year. You know, we were, our services got, you know, my hands are basically tied with what I can do. I'm a one-person show down there. I don't mean to take all the credit. Cheryl is very good as well. But unfortunately, she's not here and she can't do her job to the full capacity. And it's been like that for years. So even with all that struggle and challenge, I still come out on top. I can still maintain the one-to-three day during rounds. My costs will still come in lower than the outside vendors. Now, of course, there's some jobs we're not set up for, like foiling and very large runs, and we farm those out. We, we go to a competitive bid. Everyone in the city is welcome to bid on those. And we just let the vendors fight over it. We always get the best value for our dollar. We don't default and just send everything over to one vendor. That's a horrible mistake because, I mean, if you lock yourself in, I mean, the complaints I'm getting too, and I have industry people complaining about this as well, because they're going to get locked out of doing any work. At least now, in a bidding process, they have a chance to get every job. And they can adjust their margins accordingly. But if we go to one vendor, you know, what incentive is it for them? And what is that due to the rest of the businesses here who get a lot of our work? I mean, there isn't a single-source solution for this. I, I act as a print buyer. I farm out, there's about 20 or 30 different vendors I deal with on a daily basis. Now, even if we were to get rid of this and outsource the whole thing, you're still going to need a person to funnel all this through. You can't have, you know, 32 divisions just willy-nilly ordering print to their liking. You'll, you'll still need a body down there to funnel all this through. You only have one or two staff people now, so where, where's the, there's no savings. You still need a person. And plus, like I mentioned before, we own all equipment down there. There's, you know, it's set. All you have to do is how to figure out how to finance a couple of positions for the year and keep the lights on. But as far as everything else, we're here, we're go, we're set up to run.
Thanks, John. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. I just wanted to give him the opportunity, but I'm, I'm still supportive of the, of the RFP process as long as we get to know the numbers that our own print shop could provide as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. The screen is clear. I just, I just wanted to say one thing, John. Great presentation. And I'm a guy that needs paper because I, I write, I write on everything. And if I, I don't know how to write on a screen. And the time to do all that for me is not effective, or my staff. But, you know, since I've been council president, we've gotten to get close, if you will. And every time we have a call for your services, you come through on time. I mean, it's perfect. It's really, we really appreciate you. I just want to tell you that. And we did some outsourcing. It was ridiculous. It, it took months to get it back. It was incorrect. And maybe my chief of staff would like to comment on that, but I did want to tell you, great presentation. Relax. You did a good job. And we really appreciate you. And this is my chief of staff, Laura Rios.
Hi, good morning, Laura Rios, Chief of Staff to Council President Capriolio. And just wanted to echo his comments. We put in a request to get business cards letterhead, you know, the normal stuff, certificate paper. And it would come back, simple things, even after you proved it, it would come back incorrect. And we were not talking about weeks. We were talking about months. And John has just been a pillar to our office and I think, you know, pretty much to all the council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Chief of Staff, you concur in those comments, I presume? Yes. Yes. Okay. Well, again, I'm a paper person. We, I know our printer in, in, in the back for us breaks down all the time. We, we just can't get good service out of it. We call John, boom, done, back. It's very, very, very efficient. We truly appreciate you. And Dee, do you have a, you want to add one more thing?
There is one more issue. They would also need an employee that is going to do the mail. Because currently, I believe the way it's set up right now is the county has a runner that takes, we call them blue bags, to the various departments throughout the city and the county. But then when they drop the stuff off, I believe it's our copy center that then divvies it up for each department in City Hall or for other departments. If you're sending something to the police department, it has to go down. And I believe they still take the mail around the various city departments, right? Do you guys go down and pick up your own mail now? So obviously, you wouldn't have to pay somebody a lot of money to do that, but you would have to have somebody that would provide that service too.
Thank you. So I, I'm supportive of So I'm supportive of the status quo, quite frankly, and if we hire another person, John, it sounds like that'd be enough to sustain the operation, utilize things we paid for, continue the great service. As Council President, it's been very frustrating for me, because I've set deadlines and goals for our council, and we're getting close, but it's always the last minute, and then it's a scramble, and it's rough on my staff, and I know the rest of the city. So I'm very pleased with the service, and I would recommend that we just find someone that could help you and keep it going. While we're fixing something that's not broke, except for the lack of staff. And you can classify, or however you want to do it, in a bureaucratic way. Bottom line is, we just need someone to be there with you and continue the service, so. Member Soria?
I guess I just have a question in terms of what is budgeted for November. Is it those two positions? And so that's all you guys would need, John? Those two positions are two full, so there are two full-time positions budgeted up to November?
Yes.
Okay. So then, just, I guess my motion would stand that we, and I concur with Paul Capriolo, to continue doing status quo. And if we wanna explore shifting or putting it under the city clerk's purview, then, you know, that's a different call, but I think status quo would work.
I'd also recommend that if we have that position in the budget, we should immediately try to fill it, so John can get the helping needs. And if you want to RFP it in the interim or whatever, that would be great.
Those, both positions in the department are filled.
Okay, good.
There's no vacancy there.
Right, very good. Thank you. You know, I had a...
So I'm confused, but the comments were made then that the person is, can't do all of their tasks?
The person is out on medical leave right now.
Oh, right now?
Yes. But that position is filled. We can't, we brought in a temp to backfill that, but we cannot fill that position permanently, because there's an incumbent already in there.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
But it sounds like we have a competent backfill person now, as opposed to temps in the past that have kind of come and gone. I'd recommend we try to figure out a way to keep him on board until the medical leave situation works out, or however it works. I'm not familiar with that part of it.
Again, I appreciate the comments. I don't want to start wandering into our personnel-related issues at the dais, if you don't mind.
Appreciate that. Thank you. You know, I had a couple of finance questions, again, on paper, my notes, and there were some pretty big swings I noticed in the finance department, and for instance, in item 56121, there's about a $25,000 decrease in inventory. I don't know what that, there's some things I just don't understand. If someone could clarify.
That's central printing. That's the inventory needed. We only budgeted five months' worth, so it's not in that line item anymore. So that's where the money, that was fully funded for a year, and the decrease is the amount that's only for the seven months that we are not funding.
So we're still on course with their production abilities? And then the computer software for finance, looks like it was a decrease of $88,200 outside of 57415? Again, a big swing. I'm just, is there a reason, or?
I'm gonna look to Jane on this, because I believe that is the budget system that was purchased.
Yeah, that was, that was work that was necessary last year to implement the new budget system. That's no longer needed, because we have implemented it, and so that's why the line item's been reduced.
Okay, and then, on down to page 59309, facilities management charges, almost a $60,000 increase. Is there, do we have some needs, or something happened that we?
No, we moved the business tax unit from the first floor up to the second floor. They're now on the same floor as the rest of the finance department, and so we are now receiving the charge for that new unit, or the new space that we've taken up with the business tax unit. So that's why the facilities charges increased.
That would be the city hall rent as well?
And that would be city hall rent as well.
Okay, good. Thanks for the help on these things. I appreciate it. I did know at premium on the 51401, it says premium pay. What's premium? I'd like to get some of that premium pay. Is there, can you define that for us?
Yeah, and so in the, in the department, we have several people who have CPA licenses. They get an extra pay for possessing that CPA license. We also have several people who provide interpreter services. They also get a premium pay for providing those services. All these premium pays are spelled out in the Memorandum of Understanding, and that's our share, based on the people that we have in our department. That's the share that we need to budget for them.
Makes perfect sense. Thanks. On down to 53302, last year was 7,500, and now it's 97,500.
I'm gonna look at Jane for that one, because I believe about 95,000 of that is...
Yeah, that, again, that's moved from actually implementing the budget system. Now, that is the support that we have to have in order to maintain the system and to do any alterations to it. That's the cost of the consultant that we have under, under, under contract for those services for next year, and actually for the next, I think it's two or three years.
Would that tie into 53402, specialized services slash tech, which was about 232,000, and now it's up to 698,000?
I believe that's partly the print shop account.
That is part of the print shop account, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
No, that is the, that's the potential that we've set aside for the RFP, for the, if the RFP goes through, if it is implemented, we've put that money in that line item in anticipation of the contract being awarded. So that's why the large increase in there.
If the contract is not awarded, what would that number be?
We would, we would remove 471,100 out of that line item and move it to other areas.
And just to clarify, that would be the funding source that we would use then for the rest of the year for those positions and for that service?
That's right.
So it's, it is technically budgeted for the entire year, whether it is, it is to remain status quo, or if it is to be outsourced.
Perfect. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. I think that's it. I just wanted to get some clarification. These, I'm trying to learn this as we go along, and you guys are very helpful. I appreciate that. Member Soria?
Actually, you asked all the questions that I had, so thank you for asking those. And so earlier, I asked, I guess, my question was, we're only funding it through November. However, there is enough funding, just for the record, in this budget to make sure that we keep status quo, correct?
We can move it from other line items and move it for the status quo for the whole year.
So the money is there to continue running our print shop?
Yes, there is money in place.
For the entire year? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. The screen is clear, and thank you very much for the presentation, answering all our questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are prepared to go to Mayor and City Manager's office. Jane, you're, you're on.
Yes, the City Manager's office, that begins, the office of the mayor and the City Manager begins on page B1. Again, this is a, primarily a status quo budget. There are the same number of positions as there has been in the previous year. There have been no changes in appropriations. They did defund one position in order to cover the costs of the 27th pay period. There have been no bonuses budgeted in this budget, nor have they been budgeted anywhere else in the city. And any other compensation has been rolled into the base salary. I do want to point out that not only has the position been defunded for the 27th pay period, but also to give some flexibility to the next administration, which will be coming in in January. And I believe that's, that's all that I have.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to come forward and address this issue? That was your opportunity to come up and give us your opinions and answer any questions. Seeing none, back to the dais, and the screen is clear. Oops, Member Soria, pardon me.
Thank you. So in regards to that one defunded position to cover the 27th pay period, what position was that?
That was the, sorry. The position was in our office, and it was an economic development position. It was formerly Amy Fuentes', this position.
Okay. So that was just, it wasn't filled? It was just, or she left?
She left. We didn't fill it, and we defunded it in order to absorb the additional costs for the 27th pay period.
Okay. And so I know that there's other positions that folks are moving out of the city mayor's office. What are we doing with those positions? We're still funding them? Because I know, where are we funding? I know Kelly has moved to be Assistant Director in DARM, right?
Correct.
So is that included in the new DARM budget? Is it being paid out of the city mayor's office? How is that working?
Okay. The Assistant Director position for DARM is being paid out of DARM's budget for Assistant Director. The positions that are in the mayor's budget are all the positions. They are fully funded, but in anticipation that we want to give maximum flexibility to the next administration that comes in and what they may want to do, either with the positions or the dollar allocations there.
So are we funding an entire year of those positions? Or should we just, maybe, well, if they're not being filled, shouldn't we just fund half the year?
Well, okay, so we are using the funding for the vacant position. So half of the year will go to the new administration, the current half-year. We will use the funding for that position. We are looking at bringing on a temp, and we will be using the funding for that position to help offset the cost of a temp.
Okay. And is it gonna be the same amount? Are you guys anticipating it being different? So you guys, the question is, are you guys gonna fill Kelly's position in the city mayor's office? Which is a funded position right now?
I don't know the answer to that right now. We're gonna, we, I do know that we do need the funding, and whatever funding we don't use for that specific line item, maybe move to a different line item, as we all do in our budgets. We move, we move funding, if we have $4,000 left in this line item, and we didn't have enough in our travel line item, we'll move that funding from that item. That happens every day in the city and every budget.
So you guys are asking us just to fund the, all the positions that you guys have for this past year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Don't get annoyed.
No, no, I, and I think...
I'm just asking questions.
And no, I guess the point is, and George spoke to this, we need to fill back, because Kelly, there's still work in our office.
And that's my question.
And we, the reason we're gonna go with a temporary position, because we don't want to hire a permanent position and then have a new administration come in and go, "Well, I appreciate the last four or five months of work, but I've got a different idea for how I want to structure my office." And we don't want to handcuff the next administration as to what they can or can't do. And unlike the council, the mayor and City Manager's office doesn't have the opportunity or the option of carrying over salary savings or other savings like you guys do. It just gets put into the carryover, and then we budget accordingly. So yes, we're trying to provide some coverage during at least the next four to six months, but also provide some opportunities for the next administrations to structure their office as they deem fit.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the explanation. One of the questions also that I had on line item 59120, which is on page five, it's FAC repair and replace projects?
Yeah, that's for the carpet replacement for City Hall.
Okay. I think those are all the questions that I had up to now. Thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. Thank you all for that presentation, and we'll move to City Council offices. Jane, if you'd prefer, you could probably give us the presentation from there, make it, make it easier for you. We all work together here.
Yes, actually, your budgets are, again, much like the City Manager's budgets, are status quo. You can see them starting on page B9. You will see that you will start with the base salary. You have your 50,000 of additional discretionary. You have also communicated to our office an estimate of what you believe your carryover is going to be, and that has been incorporated into your next year's budget. And so you see the varying amounts there, depending on how much each individual council district thought that they were going to be able to carry over. And then you have your FY '17 proposed budget. You will also see down on the bottom of page B9, your infrastructure expenditure. These are the carryover funds that you've had for several years, and there are some districts who do not have funding and some districts that do. And that has also been carried over and will be available to you next year. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you very much. You should let me know, I should have asked you earlier if it's easier for you. We'll do that next week as well, so. Okay, is there any, one of the public that wishes to address the City Council offices' budget? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, the dais screen is clear. I don't see any questions from anybody? No? Okay. That's it for the day. So we'll reconvene our budget hearings on Tuesday, June 14. At that time, we'll discuss parks, police department, fire department, and DPU.